A lot of people think that the money's there and that we are going to build. So I feel a lot of the supporters had not yet maybe mentioned to the county commissioners that they were in support of building a new school. So by coming out and you showing today, uh, you're helping me out to speak. This is a board of commissioners work session. But having you here speaks volumes. The hallway or a little in the hallway, this is a great problem to have. Um, our marshal says the only people with a honey in the chairs will be able to stay because we have exceeded this. But we can stay in the hallways and leave the door open if you wish. But I would like for the county commissioners to see the people that's coming and believe that we need to do and provide our students with the best that we can provide. We have been given fifty-nine million, we need to put it to use. There are ways of us finding this seven million dollars to build a new high school. So, um, you have been given a flyer. The flyer kind of just tells you that this is their work session, this is their time. Um, we have been invited, I don't even know if we get to speak, I'm unclear of that. Do we get to speak or are we just sitting here as a board?
That's a Bobby.
Okay. So it's important, um, I would like for all commissioners to be here to see that you're here, even our county manager, I don't know where they are.
They'll be out any minute.
Okay. So, uh, if that's okay, then we will move people out of the room, um, if they're not in a chair, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So.
I, I would just like to say on behalf of the board, we thank you all for coming. We thank you for your support. Um, it means the world to us to see this ring ball. Thank you.
I would like to know kind of a head count. Um, Mr. Putnam, can you kind of do a head count of people else they leave out? So we kind of have an estimate of how many people here show today. I appreciate that greatly. Um, I hate that you traveled here, but, um, I said I'd be willing to give up my seat as well because the children sitting here on the floor is what we're seeing. So, um, if you wish to make a comment, it's my understanding that comments can be made on August the fifth or send an email.
Is there anyone here that's not supportive of a new high school?
Anyone here not in favor of? We're not here, we are not here by no means to cause issues because we have to work together as a community to build and, and provide for our future. So in no way do we want our board against their board. It's just that the two boards have to come together. But when I'm told that there are more naysayers to this, I find that really hard to believe. So this is just a visual powerful opportunity for county commissioners and county managers in the county to see there are way more supporters than there are naysayers. And there are other ways that we can make seventy million dollars. So with that being said, I appreciate you coming. I hate that it's in and out until, um, in the central office, you can go back and let some other folks that want to stay. And there's not but a handful of you. There's only like twelve of us in that building, so I appreciate it. Well, yes, sir. Grab a seat, your honey's in the seat, you get to stay.
What's that? Is it happening, huh? Somebody had my chair. Was it right here?
Hey, how are you doing?
Good, well.
Can you change your sign outside? It says a hundred and sixty-seven people standing in row. We're not standing. So that's why. No, I was saying, if there's not a chair, that one is your.
April, I didn't read you so, to you, you got all your book of paperwork? I'm sure there's something we don't have.
If you have a cell phone, please ensure that it is on vibrate or off.
That's what we appropriated and asked for. School card expenditure. So that's what we give them.
I printed some of it.
So you're all in the hot seat. You're all in the hot seat.
You have made a safe point.
This actually explains like their, when they're here, it's. This is our line. It's clearly this is top of the list. Yeah. We give them. The, this actually breaks down what the, that is for. So you might, you might call it three thousand. Really, really, this is our, this may be our.
Yes, they must force them to work, so. On the figure out to open. Cause they're not on, they're here as listed, just like if three of us went to someplace, we just didn't miss no action.
No, Heather. No, no, Heather.
Look at that. The time is around opening and closing. They don't have to open the door because it's a protection. If we ask them a question, then they can answer. They're not here to make speeches. If you have a figure out. They are divided, this is our work session. Wait till we get. They're just in there talking. We're just in there talking. Ready? Uh. We'll go ahead and call this. Go ahead and call this work session. I'll be. Call this meeting to order. We will have a pledge of allegiance. And, and also we'll have a moment of solace, but Brett Jared has got a prayer for us. And then we'll have the approval of the agenda, if y'all please rise. Steve, do you want to lead us?
To Jesus, the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And with that, Brett?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day which you blessed us with, and we thank you dear Lord for the offered opportunity, dear Lord, to come this way. And dear Lord, we thank you for the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education and their concern and their willingness to give of their time for the betterment of our county. Dear Lord, we pray for decisions to be made, looking to you for guidance. We thank you dear Lord for the children of this county, and as we move forward, we just keep them at the utmost part of our mind, that we do what's best in their interest. And dear Lord, we just give you all the glory and praise for all that you do for us, most of all your son and the salvation he brings, for it your name's sake we pray, amen.
Thank you. Be seated, please. We have, uh, on the agenda, we need to prove. I think that's her. Need to prove the agenda as presented.
Most approve.
Second.
The motion in a second, Dan. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Uh, just a little words to start with. This is a work session, uh, talking about the, uh, new proposed construction of the high school. And we have several people here, uh, school board people are here, audience, we appreciate everybody coming. But this is a work session, and the questions will come from the, uh, from the Board of Commissioners. And we have, uh, I think, a lengthy set of questions that were, that were presented earlier to the, uh, school system. So, there's, uh, no inner reaction, action between the audience and the schools and the county commissioners. So with that being said, uh, we'll go ahead with the work session, and Mr. Carter.
Chairman, so at the last joint meeting, there were several questions that, uh, came up regarding the county's ability and availability of considering, uh, the additional funds for the proposed school. So today, I have some of our team members here in the front that have their, their departments are the ones that will be impacted by this project. And I'm just gonna start with Rita, Rita Miller, as, as I remember, one of the questions that came up was, one, about the residential solid waste sticker fees. Two, uh, what type of tax increase would the county be looking at, should it have to raise taxes? When it will raise taxes, should it have to raise taxes? And a couple of other things, so with the board's permission, I would like to ask Rita to, uh, speak to you regarding those questions and any other that you may have as it relates to her department.
Pull, pull that microphone down, and there you go.
Okay, the question that was posed about the solid waste fees, um, we, we bill about eighty-four hundred, which, um, produces eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars worth of revenue, of about a ninety-four percent collection rate on solid waste fees. Question was posed, if we raised that solid waste fee from ninety-eight dollars to a hundred and ten dollars, that's an increase of a hundred thousand dollars. If we raised that fee to a hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's an overall increase of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And that's what I have on the solid waste fee. If you wanted to raise seven million dollars in a year, your tax rate would go up about thirty-five, thirty-six cents for an overall tax rate of ninety-five cents per hundred dollars value. That would be one year to produce seven million dollars.
Thank you. Follow up?
If any of the commissioners have questions for Rita or anything relating to her department.
So, tax rate will be thirty-six percent on the hundred, plus the fifty-nine percent we're already paying, plus the fire tax.
Correct. Our current rate's point five nine seven.
Thirty-six.
Between thirty-five, thirty-six cents, yes.
Be over a dollar on the hundred.
That would be one year.
Me?
So, what do you have numbers on five-year, ten-year?
I did three-year.
Three-year?
So it's point seven one seven, for, to do it over a three-year period. Now, that third year would get into the year of our reevaluation, and of course, we don't know what our values are gonna be, so I couldn't really say for sure what that rate would be in the year of twenty-twenty-seven.
Thanks.
Carter?
Um, I, what would, just general values? What would have, what is a penny raising now?
Hundred and ninety-two thousand.
So, a hundred and ninety-two thousand. Now, we have given amortization schedules for different amounts. The one I'm looking at right now, seven million, borrow seven million dollars. At six percent interest, we're looking at three hundred and sixty thousand a year. Basically, it's gonna be our monthly payments, and that's approximate. If a penny raises a hundred and ninety-two thousand, we are looking at basic. I, in the ballpark?
I've not, I don't, I've not seen much of it yet. I would just take in the tax value of the problem.
That, that answered, uh, that answers my question, Mr. Chair.
Any follow-up? Michael?
Let me just clarify, Commissioner John, which, uh.
I'm looking.
Some more.
I, uh, uh, excuse me, that was the three and a half million.
Yeah.
Now, the seven million is, uh, yearly payments of, uh, seven hundred and twenty, approximately seven hundred and twenty thousand, do we agree on that?
Which, which year term are you?
Fifteen years, seven, uh, seven million dollar loan, fifteen years with an interest rate of six percent, it'd be the third page.
Looking at interest and principal.
Interest and principal. I'm just looking at the monthly, uh, pay, upper to top, I assume that that includes both.
Does on the top, yes.
Alright. So, uh, one ninety, one ninety-two, we're looking at approximately a six cent increase in property tax a year to pay, to make that payment. Or reduction in discretionary spending.
Combination.
Combination. Alright, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to put it Barney, Barney level that I can understand. Thank you. My apologies, I was looking at the wrong page, I was looking at three and a half million.
Thank you. Any other follow-up?
The next, next, uh.
But let me, let me say this, this feedback, they're trying to work on it in there, and, uh, it's not the microphones, it's not the speakers, it's something in the control booth.
So, next, we had a number of questions that related to the plans themselves, and it's understood that the architect is not here today, I think there's a possibility of him attending and being available sometime next week. But we do have our in-house inspection group and team, which consists of Travis and Daniel. So, we got, all of us got together yesterday, and we talked about, you know, what, what we're looking at today. So I had asked those two guys collectively and respectively to, to gather some thoughts on what their review of the plans are, and if there are anything that they would like to comment about or identify, and then opened that up to the commissioners to ask if there are certain questions that e- either one of them can answer. So Travis, I'll start with you.
I mean, as far as the plan review, everything's code compliant, it's been through my office and Daniel's, it's also been through DOI and Raleigh, they have to approve them too. And as far as the rooms, I know you had a question about that, actual classrooms, there's thirty-four, there's a total number of new classrooms in the new building. And the rest is office space, labs, shop space, gymnasium, cafeteria. And, pretty much it.
Um, if I may, I think with the architect, unfortunately, something must have come up that he couldn't be here today, and I've got no idea why, but the last meeting, uh, I think it, the board was disappointed that he couldn't provide certain information, and there again, he's not able to be here today. But I think if the board has some specific questions on buildings or rooms, I think possibly Sid could step in and, and answer what he knows about those. Uh, so it's not a totally wasted meeting today that, that we had hoped to get further answers on. On, I think you've got a question?
Yes.
Wait a minute.
We allow Daniel to provide his responses first, and then you can address them both as a, as a group.
Go ahead, Dan.
My response won't be much different than Travis's. From a plans review standpoint, the building's code compliant, structurally sound, meets everything that the fire code would seem to require that the building needs to meet. From a plan standpoint, they look good.
On?
I, I just want, I previewed, I went over and I looked at the plans today. And a number of things stood out in my mind, and I want to confirm that I'm not seeing things, please. So, I'm not asking you to comment, just to make sure that my notes are correct. I'm showing four thousand square feet approximately in a band room?
Correct.
We have a ba-, well, that, that's a question for the school board. I'm showing separate rooms for a band, admin, uh, music library, an office for the band director, a practice room, storage room, and instrument storage. Does that sound about right from your memory? I know that you haven't got the plans in front of you.
Yeah, that seems correct.
Can you tell me what a community power distribution room is?
I do not know that one. I had the same question.
Could that be the electrical service for the school?
Get right close to it, to the mic.
I'm not real sure what the community power director room is.
Notice that that is in the a- admin area, where there are four, uh, four toilets? Correct? Nope, correct. I want, that, this is an issue that's gonna come up, and I just want to make sure that I'm looking at it right. Two conference rooms, large room and a small conference room. Two assistant principals offices.
Correct.
I didn't put down the, uh, square footage that that is going to encompass, but would you give me an estimate, please?
I don't remember on the square footage of that one, I remember the band room, that area, that wing was around five thousand, which is two-story, and the office, I think, is close to the same.
So we're looking at five thousand square feet for each?
Is, is this a question that Sid may be able to help us with?
I cannot tell you the individual room, square footage.
I'm just, uh, I'm just wondering. Just, it just brought a question to my mind, and, uh, as I was looking at it, uh, because the question comes up, don't we have these areas in the old high school? And the question that I would ask is, are you gonna lose them from demolition? Why are you building these facilities if they already exist? Are they gonna be taken away in the old, in, whenever they tear down the Porsche?
Are you directing your question to Sid?
Can anybody answer me, that, that's the thing that comes out in my mind right now, and this would probably be a question that needs to be answered whenever we have a joint session. The opposite is. It helped that we have a comparison between the old and the new, uh, with the answers that we were given, but we just got these, so that just jumped out on there. But, uh, not familiar with plans, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something.
The, the current band room is part of the, in, in the area that will be torn down.
Thank you. That answers that question.
Now, originally, it was in a different building that will not be, that will not be torn down, but, uh, it was moved probably two years ago to an area that, that will be torn down.
Okay, so it's gonna be lost.
Yes. We are, we are also currently looking for a band director, that, we do not have a band director currently, but that was a question that you had too.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Carter?
No, everyone knows Travis, but I think ought to him introduce himself, because he may be back in front of that podium before, before things done, right? Next time it comes up Travis, we're gonna get you to introduce yourself.
Uh, let, let me just say, just a few words here, that I'm not sure everybody understands what's gonna be torn down at the high school. And I, uh, Sid was gracious, and Nessie Weaver was gracious enough to take me around this morning. And basically, everything at the high school, except for the old gym and the two small doors that go into the, that entrance. and the two small doors that go into the, that entrance, everything to the right of that, including the Bo Wedd section, will be demolished. Is that not correct? So, uh, the media center is going, the cyber campus, all of that stuff, the cafeteria, all of that stuff is, will be gone. And everything will be new. There's a slight possibility that there might be some refurbishing done to the old gym. Uh, that's not set in stone yet. The wing that was added on about twenty-some years ago, that the, what I call the new gym, that is staying intact. There's been comments that that gym, when it was built, was obsolete. That is not a true comment. And what has happened since that gym was built, the state changed the rules and Missy, you can help me if, if I go wrong here. The state changed the rules on the size of the outside playing area because a student got hurt on the, on some steps that were up there. So that gym is basically being used, uh, as a practice gym and as the volleyball gym. But it still can be used for basketball if they put up this temporary, uh, barrier uh, to keep somebody from getting hurt. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, uh, the statement that that gym being built and opened was obsolete from day one is incorrect. Also, when I went to the school, there was reports from the media center that you could see daylight through the roof, the walls and the roof. We toured the media center, Sid and Miss, Missy and the, uh, media director. There's no such thing. There was report of a snake sneaking into the media center. But that was around a air conditioning piping duct and they, they put some foam around it so no more snakes can crawl in. But, that building is also gonna be torn down. Uh, there's a lot of stuff on media I hear. I don't do Facebook. I have no confidence in it. People can say whatever they wanna say.
Is this a question I'm answering?
Excuse me, excuse me, Jason, I'm talking. The, the, what we were looking at today was trying to understand what's gonna be torn down and why it's gonna be torn down. The need for a new gym, in my opinion, is a legitimate need. I coached, helped coach softball for many years and people were in and out of the bad weather. But what this board is trying to figure out is what is gonna happen? How many new rooms are gonna be built? What those rooms are gonna be used for? That is the question that comes before this board before we can look at funding whatever million dollars that we're gonna have to fund. So, those are legitimate questions as to what's gonna be built and how it's gonna be built. And also, I think we need to know, is this a fifty-year plan? Forty-five? I think Missy one time said maybe fifty-plus years. So that's a long time in advance. For us to try to find whatever amount of money that we have to find, we need a lot of answers to a lot of questions. So, Mr. Carter, next?
The next thing that, that came up at the meeting was the question regarding the county's, um, consideration of waiving of tipping fees for the amount of debris that will be generated by this project. And David Spasher is here to talk about that. I know that inside these questions that are on the board that, that we do not have a specific conversion ratio as of the receipt of that, but I want David to explain to you what that will do, how that will impact the operations of the facility uh, so that you have a general understanding of what that may do, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Certainly appreciate this opportunity. Uh, we at the transfer facility, of course, um, as we collect waste from day to day, uh, we collect funds from those who bring in construction material and that is collected at seventy-five dollars a ton. We have no way of knowing for sure exactly how many ton will be generated for this project. We have looked at, uh, our beneficial field. Our beneficial field is now reaching a year old and we can only keep it open for a year, so we right now have no beneficial field area. So, that beneficial field would, would, uh, accommodate clean brick, block, cement, those type of things, but now we have no room. There's nothing available there at the transfer facility. Our beneficial field is full. So, by not knowing exactly how many ton can be generated, we really have no way of putting a price on that other than it's gonna be seventy-five dollars a ton. Now, I know that, that we got a letter a few weeks back that has increased our, um, what we pay out per ton that goes to Caldwell County by two dollars. Uh, so that has increased the amount of, of funds that is being paid out, um, by the county per year as far as waste disposal goes. So this year, we have a total of six hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars in that line item that is budgeted that has been approved by the county commissioners. That is all we have for this year. And this, this number was, uh, generated uh, because of some increase in what we're receiving, which is about a thousand tons a month. So we're over twelve thousand tons, actually, in a year's time. Our, our annual report just went in. It was a little over twelve thousand tons for the past year. We looked at that and Jen, we calculated that by the amount of garbage that was coming in, the waste stream that was happening today. So that number was increased some from last year, uh, to bit, to account for the increase in the waste stream. So this is the amount of money that we have that we can pay Caldwell for taking our, uh, waste from our transfer facility. This includes, uh, the transportation of it as well. So, that's what we have and that's what we have to work with. You know, we, we charge contractors seventy-five dollars a ton for the construction material that comes in and every contractor that comes across the scale is weighed. They're weighed when they go out, uh, if they don't have a tire weight on their vehicle and it is calculated accordingly. And then they, they pay their bill and they're able to go on their way.
Questions, John?
Can Caldwell take this trash?
Yeah, they can take it. And, and then you, you're gonna, it, it's gonna entail a little more though than just money. We're able to keep three trailers on the, on the lot at the transfer facility right now. During, during the earthquake and, and I know that we had over three million tons of earthquake material of the pat of, that was over a period of three years, but we was able, we're able to keep three trailers on the lot right now. And normally, two of those are full with one in the pit, uh, before they come back and get the, the, the trailer uh, and bring us a, an empty one. So, we have to make sure that we have those trailers available. Sometimes we can get four, sometimes we can get five, sometimes we can only get three.
Isn't this impacted on the new transfer station when, while we're constructing that?
It will, it will. And as construction is going on over at the transfer facility, things will be kinda busy. Uh, it will be an impact.
Anything else, John? Uh, Timmy?
So, um, I think we've got a paper from, I think it's through Sid that they had total, um, total debris. Is that correct?
I think what you have is...
Sid, why don't you come up and go ahead and identify yourself and...
Sid Carrier, Facility Director for Allegheny County Schools. What you have, is that a money figure or is it a tonnage figure?
Tonnage, it says fifteen hundred and thirty-five tons total. Is that an, is that an estimation from? I mean, it seems like it'd be a lot more than that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how accurate that would be. Does it say where that's from?
Uh, it was an email from Shannon Alba?
Mm-hmm.
I guess what I'm curious about, so we don't have a clue how many tons we're talking about here yet.
If the board will let me help Sid, I'll have some answers to these questions.
Excuse me, excuse me. This is for us, it's not for the public. Go ahead.
And that's possible that that's per load?
Per load.
I mean, that, that may be a little high, but, uh, that could be, you know, per load. Uh, I know there's more, more there than that.
So I guess my question to David is, I mean, we can see as common sense, there's a lot of debris there. So my question to you is, do you think our landfill, our setup, will, we have the ability to do this?
No.
So that's, yeah, so basically it's out, like, they basically won't have to haul it off presses. Okay.
I will share this. Uh, I met with one of the demo guys that come by to look at the job and, uh, one of the questions I had was how much can you demo a day? And his figure was twenty-four thousand square feet a day.
Yes.
And I know there's no way you all can handle that.
That, that was my understanding. Um, you know, we had a lot less than that on days with earthquake and we had to cut the haulers off because we couldn't get any more trailers. It is against, it is against DEQ's policy and rules and general statute. If we ca- we cannot leave, um, waste on the floor. It's gotta be cleaned up every single day. So if, you know, if it came, so we, and that was the same figure that I understood, was twenty-four thousand square feet a day. Now, i- if we was able to take half of it, the other half's gotta be stored somewhere or, or something done with and, and, you know, for it to be stored on site, that looks like to me that's gonna hold things up. So that, that wouldn't be feasible, don't think, but...
And another thing to give thought to, according to who tears this down, a lot of those guys separate. They separate the copper, they separate the metal, you know, there's money in that stuff, so, uh, a true weight amount may be hard to figure. And I know there's been some, some local people that's interested in some of the debris if it's, if it's allowed to be dumped in certain areas and, you know, that would also cut down on what you guys would see, so.
That was all I had. I appreciate you answering that, Sid. Um, I do, do wanna go back, um, um, with, on the permit stuff. We have a paper here that says permit fee's gonna be about five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Is that an exact or is that something they came up with?
That is, I mean...
Have you figured it yet?
Not on the exact bid number. As, if the bid number's sixty-six million, it comes in at five twenty-eight. If the bid with alternatives is what, seventy or seven point one million, it's around five eighty-two.
Is the, uh, the sprinkler system and all that all combined, like the fire?
It has its own permit fee, but it's a very minimal amount.
Okay. That's it. That's all. Thank you, guys.
Um, I've got a question for David.
Go ahead.
If we could get the trailers and we parked them at the school, would that help any? Just take them straight from the school to Caldwell County?
I'm sure that would. I'm sure that would help. I'm not sure, we, we would have, have to check with the hauler. I mean, it, it's, it's not Caldwell County's landfills trucks. It is, it is a contracted hauler. Would have to check with him to see if, if they, if that's something that they would be willing to do. Um, a lot of times, we couldn't get trailers because they didn't have available drivers. Um, you know, there's, there's different things nowadays that, that we have trouble with in, in getting things done because there is no one to do it. Um, so, but, you know, we, sometimes we could get five trailers and if you could take two to the school and, and do that, that's one thing, but um, they still have to be weighed and everything before they leave.
I, I just thought that might help some to tie up the...
It would, it would if it's permissible by the hauler.
They could come by the transfer center and wait before they leave.
Yeah.
Hello?
Is the current school ADA compliant?
Missy or Sid, I'm gonna answer. Just come to the microphone, please.
Missy Weaver, Superintendent of Allegheny County Schools. The new parts of our school, the new, uh, addition that we did twenty-some years ago, that is in complacency. But the CTE wing is not. Um, there is one female bathroom in the CTE building. I won't say CTE, I call it the Ag Building, the Agriculture Building. You'll know what that mean. Um, one female bathroom and the door's twenty-six inches. We do have children in wheelchairs and the wheelchairs do not go through the door. Students have to leave that building, go through the weather into the new, into the building to use the restroom, so there are issues for our, um, children who, um, are in chairs.
Any other questions on that? Uh, I, I think I've got one. I'm not sure if it's David or Sid. When, when the building program starts the destruction, there's gonna be a mixture of either cinder blocks, bricks, tiles, whatever. What, who owns that building once it starts to be destroyed? Does the contractor and it's his responsibility to get rid of it? Does he start selling off parts of the debris? Will he separate what he brings to the transfer station from, from whatever he's tearing down?
I think to answer your question, that is a subcontractor decision. They have bid that part of the project from the contractor. So how they go about demoing that would be on them. They may not separate anything. They may separate all of it. I, I don't know. I have no idea on that.
That is our discussion today. They have the option of selling the aluminum. They have the option of selling the metal.
Yes, that, that is theirs.
Any, anything that I guess is recyclable, they have that option. So that material may not come to the transfer station, or it may come.
Exactly. Like I said before, yes.
And the money, the, if they do sell that stuff, the money goes to the subcontractor or...
Yes, sir.
Doesn't come back to the school system.
No, sir. We have reserved the right to, uh, before demo starts, if there's certain things that we wanna take out like kitchen tables, uh, anything that we can repurpose, that we have, we've reserved the right to do that. Beyond that, when they start demoing, it belongs to them.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments or questions? Carter, next?
Just to expand very smallly on what David identified for the board to keep in mind. He mentioned the adopted budget and the disposal cost in such budget. If by chance there, there was some type of consideration of the waiving of those fees, board knows... Board knows that that would basically involve a subsidy from the general fund. Because your fund balance in the transfer fund, as a reminder, there is over three hundred thousand dollars of that going towards the purchase of a new loader for that facility. That takes your fund balance down to around one hundred thousand dollars. One hundred thousand dollars will not touch if, if there's an expectation of a large volume of waste, will not touch that. So, all I am doing is reminding you that the way this goes, there may have to be a subsidy. If there is a fee collected, it will take care of itself. If there is not a fee collected, you will have to subsidize that fund with general fund money.
Thank you.
Second item was talking about Commissioner Greg. You talked about the trailer being at the school. And I think David related to the, the, uh, approval of the contract. In addition to that, I think we would have to look at DEQ because once waste is compacted and stored, which is what happens, those trailers are not completely leak-proof. So, there may be some runoff. If there is runoff at the transfer facility, we have staff there that take care of that. If there, if there is runoff at another site, we would have to accommodate that as well. So, that is something that, when asking that question, we have to keep in mind.
Well, this, it could cost us half a million dollars to haul that school off, if we waived the fee, at least.
It could. I mean, I, nobody here knows that, to, to be exact. It could. It could cost a quarter million. It could cost a million. Nobody knows that right now. But, I just wanted to clarify those two items. So, for the four individuals sitting at the table, are there any other questions or comments that relate specifically to them?
Uh, going through the list that you asked from the school system, or...
We'll get to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but for these guys?
I have none.
What, no?
Hey, if you wouldn't bother you in a second, we got somebody out there that wanna ask a question.
Okay.
Scott Smith. I think he's trying to help us a little bit, but...
Uh, go ahead, next.
The next item that was talked about is, is perhaps one of the items that a lot of people pay attention to is the potential borrowing for this project. And I know that there's been talk about use of fund balance. I know there's been, um, multitude of discussions about how to finance this project. The fund balance is in a very stable position, as this board knows. And it has grown to be a stable position over the last four to five years. Keep in mind, one of the things that we are also in the, in the process of is getting design plans for a transfer facility. That facility, as a reminder, is probably gonna cost about a million and a half to two million. It doesn't appear that there are going to be any, uh, state funds that go towards that project in the timeframe that we expect to build that project. So, in addition to the school project, all I am doing is laying out the future. Getting back to the funding, I have asked April, and I believe she has passed out some different schedules to you. I think Commissioner John, you've referenced one. I'm gonna ask April to talk to you a little bit about the process in which the board would have to go out for those funds, what those funds could calculate to, and what your annual payments will be, so...
What we did was, I run six amortization schedules, three on seven million and three on three and a half at five, ten, and fifteen-year intervals. So, your first one is seven million at five years at a six percent interest rate. Um, that would be something that we would have to go, we would have to do an RFP, a request or proposal with banks in the area to get the best rate if we do a loan. Um, so I just plugged six percent in. Um, the monthly payment on that, um, amortization schedule is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. And that is monthly. So, if, if you go on the seven million for ten years at the same interest rate, your monthly payment would be seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents. And then go on with a fifteen-year on the seven million, the monthly payment would be fifty-nine thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. So, your last three pages represents the three and a half million. On a five-year schedule, at the six percent also, monthly payment would be sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. On a ten-year schedule, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighteen cents. And on a fifteen-year schedule, it would be twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. I was also asked at the last meeting about our debt load and, um, what was still owed with the school system. So, in our current budget, the debt load is just over two million dollars, two million fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-two cents. Of that, one million, three hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and nine cents is school debt. That does go out to, um, thirty-two, thirty-three, over the last payment on the last school debt that the county is paying now currently. Answering questions?
Questions on the schedules?
Timmy? Who do have some school loans going off in this current budget yet?
We do.
Two of them.
There's actually... Yes, we have two going off. One's actually the smallest one that we have. It was a Glade Creek school. It was the second loan. It was a, a CB. It's close to a QZF loan.
How much again?
Thirty-one thousand, four fifty-three ninety. That's the smallest one that we have. And the other one is actually the largest one that we have, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. And that was the first loan, uh, QSSCB loan. Um, that was the first one for Glade Creek.
So, that will leave what left, don't school loan?
The Sparta School expansion. It's in two, two thousand seventeen, Sparta School phase expansion. And the other one, I believe is Glade Creek and Pine Creek with some sewer and well system, um, improvements. There's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand left on it, four years left on it.
On all of that?
On all of it, yes.
What's the last year of the school financing will be paid off?
Thirty-two, thirty-three. And that's the Sparta School.
How much is that?
Um, how much is left on it?
At the end of this year, I think it's one point two or one, something like that million, correct?
At the end of...
This fiscal year?
There's eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars left on the Sparta School, yes.
That'll be paid off in thirty-two?
Thirty-three, thirty-two, thirty-three budget fiscal year.
Any questions, John? Brad? Mr. Carter?
So, I think it would, it would prove beneficial. April, you touched briefly on the RFP process, but I think, uh, a little more detail, how we would looking at funding.
My general statute for the amount of the loan that we're discussing, or the board is discussing, um, we would have to put out an RFP process. That usually take, the, the one that we did for the county for bank services, it was a six-month process. No, this is a loan. It's not changing bank services or anything. But I, I would fully expect it would probably be a three-month process.
Questions? So, the process to borrow or get the permission?
On this size of a loan, yes, sir. We would have to do an RFP process. We would have to get some blessing from the LGC. I mean, we're gonna have to... I have a whole schedule, and we do monthly reports to the LGC, that what loans we have, what our debt load that's left every month, and that we're paying them on time. That's a monthly, uh, responsibility that we have.
Our, our credit rating should be so good that there shouldn't be a question.
There's nothing wrong with our credit rating, no sir. But there's lots of other things to take into consideration, you know. County right now is responsible for thirty million dollars. Our general fund is twenty mil- twenty-one million dollars, but we're responsible for others. We have state funds that we're responsible for. We have Medicaid funds we're responsible for. We have registered deeds fees that we're responsible for, and taxes we're responsible for, our taxes. We're responsible for thirty million. So, there's a more in-depth calculation that has to be done from other folks, other than the one sitting here.
So, is a, a quick turnaround might be ninety days or sooner, or... What's, what's a quick turnaround and what's a long turnaround?
I would say a quick turnaround would be ninety days because the RFP process is not a, a quick turnaround. In my experience with the bank services, it was not.
John, Michelle, Brad, and anything else, April? Mr. Carter?
And I do not want to exclude Heather from this conversation. I know that there may be some questions legally or in some capacity that you may have for our attorney. So, I would ask if you have any of those questions, uh...
Any questions on them? I'd say not at this time, but there certainly may, may arise here a little bit.
This time, I know that there was a number of questions that some are displayed on the board. I'm not sure if the Board of Commissioners would, has a desire to go through these. If you do, we will certainly do that. Um, I guess that would be my question, is one, is there a desire to go through these? And if so, we'll proceed. If not, we can move on.
Uh, I think there's a desire to go through the questions. That's, that's why they were asked. It would take them one at a time.
Start at the top then. And I will say that at any point in time, you know, these responses, the, the questions came from me, or the comments came from me. Responses in blue came from our school superintendent. So, if there are any questions regarding those responses, you know, be able to assist us and...
If I may, Mr. Chair? On those responses where, uh, we were to be given a copy today, we have not received those. But I would suggest that we defer those since we don't have anything to discuss. And if those answers are not provided in sufficient time for our August fifth meeting, so that we could digest it, that, uh, we delay the vote.
Got one. We got a book.
Most of them should have some of the information.
No, we got it. I, I have it electronically, but I haven't had an opportunity to, to print it off. But I'm, I'm satisfied. If it's there, then I could, I could look at it, uh, between now and the fifth of August's meeting.
And for, I heard you correctly. I'm just, I, did you say the word "vote"?
Well, I believe that we were gonna consider this on the fifth of August at the, at that meeting, correct?
Sorry, I was...
That's the one I'm referring to, 'cause, yeah.
I, I think that, that we've got this information. Michael and Missy is here, uh, to go through these questions.
Well, they're basically, um, Miss...
Uh, that would require a vote from the, uh, committee.
Mr. Carter, we were actually, um, we got these Monday afternoon and were asked to have them prepared for today. Um, we were very busy. Actually, we were meeting with J.M. Coe when we received these and the invite to come today. So, Mr. Carrier and, uh, um, and with others have been very tied up trying to get these to you as quick as possible. Um, I was out of office yesterday, so I do apologize for getting those to you first thing this morning. But you had asked for proof of the twelve million dollar grant, um, in the packet. I gave you, um, first of all, let me, let me clarify this. I kinda stepped into this. Um, I am on, uh, Dr. Beasley wrote the grant. I came in on the second year of it. We have three years left to do it. So, you have the grants that he sent, the grant that I wrote, with all documentations from Catherine Trott showing the letter official of the, uh, awarded, awarded amount of fifty-nine million dollars. And as you are sitting here, please keep in mind, we have three years to come up with the seven million dollars. We have fifty-nine million to start the project. We don't need the seven million until year three. We have plenty of time to come up with seven million dollars. All J.M. Coe is asking for is to say we have the backing of our county commissioners in year three. If we don't have enough money, our county commissioners are going to award us and help support with the seven million dollars. We're not asking for it today. We're not asking for it for next year. It's on year three, the last phase, that we would need the money. So, I want to make sure that's understood. Any questions about proof of documentation of the grants?
Any questions? Move on to number two.
Number two, um, the bid document, you should also have that. I don't know what more to say. I will say when the bid came in on January twenty-seventh, it was right, it was a little under seventy million dollars. Our committee once again went back with the contractors. They worked and trimmed down. You know, we were eleven million over. We're only seven million over. So, we have trimmed as much as we possibly can. And I wanna go back to the, the, the budget, which is the old budget that's twenty-some years old. Do you realize we do not have locker rooms for visiting teams? When the visiting teams come, they have to change clothes in classrooms? So, that, that, I just wanna make sure. These are things that folks need to know. You need to know. You don't know it if, if you're not in our environment. Um, so here's the, any questions about the bid sheet?
Chairman, there's the bid that she's referencing in that second question.
Make it a little...
It's in your packets. That was handed out to you.
Everything is in the bid sheet. And then, the second was about the bid bill. Monday, like I said, we spent three or four hours with J.M. Coe going through a list, itemized list of things for approval or to look at or pending. I mean, I sat down and thought, here we are, cutting corners for our kids again, but we are determined to build this building. So, J.M. Coe will have... are determined to build this building, so J.M. Coke will have a finalized copy of what we set and spent many hours trying to trim down the budget to meet needs, so we can get this going. Do you have any questions about the budget?
Any questions?
Like I said, the bid came in at seventy, they're down to sixty-six, so...
Are there any questions?
I always answer the questions on the board.
It is, this is bid, yes, sir. Do you have a question, Greg?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Carter, any comment?
Not at the moment.
Um, that's what I just went over. J.M. Coke will be providing. Sid, do you have any information off this? Okay. Um, like I said, it was a meeting on Monday, and they're supposed to get it to us this week. Uh, we would lack an answer, you know, it's supposed to have ended July the twenty-seventh, they did extend it, we do need an answer by August seventh. Um, next, it was noted several times that the expectation, yes, sir?
Let's back up just a minute to J.M. Coke. The, uh, they're still, from what I understand from the architect at the last meeting, they're still trying to fine-tune some of the, uh, possible, uh, reductions, is that correct?
We're going through the list of reductions that we already made, and which ones we can get by with, and which ones we have to keep, and ones, you know, we're trying...
But they're still looking at the possibility, or they quit looking?
We've quit looking, we're trying to finalize, and, and we got to get to that dollar mark now, you know, 'cause that's what we're looking for, and I know that's what you're looking for, you're looking for the final dollar. Uh, if you would scroll back up, this shouldn't take long here, um... Says, "been noted several times, the expectation of the Board of Commissioners was to have a lead presentation in the project." We have presented this, and then Dr. Beasley, I, I provided them a packet, a, a, a list of dates that we had meetings, and had county commissioners and citizens of the community welcomed to come to the Board of Education, and we looked at the plans, we talked about them, um, we sent them off, uh, the architect, and had them analyzed again, got feedback from our teachers, um, multiple times. You have a list of dates, because there was a comment about them not, you've not been part of, I mean, I feel like we have been part of, we've met quite frequently. Um, in the packet, it's just a, a letter, there's one that goes back to October thirteenth, twenty-two. Um, well, we won't have to go through all of these, it's just documentation showing...
I'm presenting them to show there's no, in these minutes, I was not here as the clerk then when these were done, but these don't say that any plans were presented in the minutes that we see that they were discussed.
The first date was, you were invited to, um, where we were recognized, that we were awarded the money.
Okay.
And from there, and to clarify, like I said, I came in on the second year. To get this off the ground, the architect had to start planning, so yes, we are ten million dollars in debt, that is something that we will have to pay for, one way or the other, with a school or without a school. Um, I was not part of that, but if I, if I was in Dr. Beasley's shoes at that time, I would be, I, I would've been doing the same thing. Um, you have to have plans to move forward, so that, that's something that we needed, to plan for the school.
If, uh, if, if Danielle, if you back up, there was someplace I just saw quickly in, in those minutes, I thought I saw a hundred and seventeen thousand, yeah, there. Give us a chance to read that, just a second, please.
Says projected.
And if you look back at the date, every year, cost of building increases, so, the new building is a hundred and seventy square, uh, thousand feet, the old one is a hundred and forty thousand square feet. There are more rooms than the old one, but that is simply because we took classrooms and built walls between them, and they may become offices, so...
I, I just look at this, hundred and seventeen thousand square feet, and this project is about a hundred and seventy thousand square feet, so...
Yes.
BPI regulations.
That was something that changed. You wanna come up, Sid?
That's fine, I just wanna say, it said the forty-seven million, that was a mistake on DPI's part, 'cause it's forty-seven million to build a middle school. It was a different amount for high schools, and so that's why I rewrote a grant called supplemental grant, and went back to Raleigh, and they gave us the additional twelve million to give us the fifty-nine million.
The, the state has changed.
Yes.
You, you can stay up there, Missy, it's...
I don't wanna take his limelight.
What you got, Bobby?
Uh, I was just curious about this, the change in the state regulations, that, that apparently this was not for a high school.
The state of North Carolina realized they didn't appropriate enough money for a high school, is basically what it comes down to.
So, when this was presented, there was a bit of confusion?
On somebody's part.
Not ours.
Not ours.
When, when was this corrected? Do you know a date when we went to the high school quote?
To the fifty, forty-seven? I, I don't know those dates, those are all, been over the last two years.
Well, that's all I had, was somebody else. Would be next on that list?
We'll talk about that one. Okay.
Go ahead.
What do you wanna know?
Uh, what is, what, what's the result of the discussion with the town?
We did meet with the town council, uh, I took the plans, uh, some of them, it's the first time they've got to see it, uh, we talked about our need, uh, I think most people here, we've talked about it enough, but maybe some of the audience doesn't know, but the current water and sewer line runs between what we call the new building and the old building. In order for us to start construction, that has to be relocated, so that's the first step of this whole project, is to relocate that. So, that's gonna come down Trojan Avenue and out Road Street. We had met with previous leaders from the town about this, and, uh, discussions did not go well. Uh, we met with these folks the other day, uh, new people, new attitudes, it went great. They were very willing to, to learn about it, to help us any way possible. They do need what I would call cut numbers, they need to know what that's gonna cost, 'cause it's included in the project right now, it's the only way we could fund it. So, they need the numbers of what that's gonna cost to reroute that. Uh, they're looking into grants, uh, other ways of, of funding it, uh, but they, much likely, need numbers, and, uh, we're working on getting that, and, uh, they're willing to help any way they can.
So, you, you, they've, are sort of favorable?
Yes, sir, very favorable, yep.
Is there any other in-con work that the town could provide for this project?
Uh, I've asked them for assistance when it comes to doing some of this work, 'cause no one better than them knows the water lines, cutoffs, and our town, sometimes you have to cut half the town off to get what you want done, so, uh, they'll have to assist on some of that. I mentioned to them, uh, much like we've, we've told you guys, it's not an upfront right now kinda thing, it's, it's built into the project. So if we can get some help at some point during the project, we're good, but if, you know, rough estimates was a half a million to relocate that line, so, uh, if the town can help us with that much, half that much, be much appreciated.
Yeah, anything would be appreciated.
That's right.
Any questions? Mr. Carter? Stay, okay, good, go on next.
Does that make sense, or do you want me to elaborate on that a little bit? Sound, okay.
Uh, any questions? Mr. Carter? Uh, I've got none.
Okay.
Uh, John?
You, which question we at? The change orders? I think that the county should also be involved in any change orders, because fiscal costs money, we're gonna be responsible for.
We do have some contingency money built in to help with some change...
That could go very quickly.
Yes, sir, yep.
Is that a percentage of the bid, or just a specific amount?
Certain phases of the job has certain contingency, like for rock, uh, stuff like that, the unknown stuff that you don't know about.
Questions? Carter?
There's a lot of projects are done. And on the ma- roughly to early report. Basically, an outline of what has occurred. I am assuming that there are any change...
Yes, sir.
...that quarterly period, this can be included in that...
Yeah, we'll be very transparent with all that. Yep.
But, that would involve the county commissioner, John, and if the contingency was to get eaten, then I assume that there would be some meetings that would occur to allow...
Questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I, just one thing, are we gonna need four department heads here for the rest of the discussion? If we, I think we've asked all the questions of them, they've got things to su- to do and supervise, can we release them?
Done with them.
I'm done with them, they've answered my questions.
They answered my questions.
Thank you, guys.
Expect a Christmas card for this.
Thank you, John. How about two?
Sid, if you all sit down now, we got you a microphone.
I'm good standing.
Easier to dance.
It is.
Sid, do you wanna sit or stand?
I get tired, I'll go sit down, Bobby.
So, I think that it's three microphones.
There you go.
All right.
Next. And, I think, from my visit today, and what you've told us before, that, uh, the cafeteria is probably one of the quickest things you're gonna get done, though...
It, it comes in phase one, yeah, in order to move the kids to the new building, it has to have a cafeteria to go with it, so that'll be completed in phase one, yes, sir.
Can you just briefly go over phase one and phase two?
Phase one will start in the parking lot, parallel with what we call the new building now. That will be built through the parking lot, up the embankment, and actually tie in to where, where the office areas are now. Once that is completed, students will be moved, and then demolition of the existing building will start, and new construction will begin after that.
The, the total days to build this project, I believe, was eleven hundred and fifty days?
I think it's a thousand fifty, three years.
How, how long is phase one, is there a projection on one or two?
There's a lot of variables, it could go fast, it could be slowed by weather, uh, I, I don't know that exact number, no.
Depends on the weather, too.
We need it to time, right, we need it to time in the summertime, so we can get things moved.
Questions? Questions? Mr. Carter? Next.
I think you have that information.
We've cussed it.
You've been through the wasteful process.
Yeah. Okay, uh... That was an early estimate that Mr. Carter and I had talked about back and forth, about getting a, so you would know a monthly allotment of what you could expect. That was provided by the architect, not the contractor. Uh, we can expect much better numbers from a contractor, so that's, that's the difference there.
I mean, half million dollars is a...
It's, it's big.
It's a big number.
There's a, there's a big difference between architect and a contractor, too.
Questions? Go ahead, next.
Yeah, I'll speak on this right here, uh, those comparisons I showed at our last meeting, that was a cost per square foot comparison. I was not trying to compare student body to student body. Yes, you may have four hundred students in an elementary school, they, they don't require what four hundred students in a high school setting requires. It's different programs, different curriculum, it's all the way different. CTE is huge, half our project is CTE. So does that, does that make sense?
At a certain point, Mr. Carter, any questions on the square foot urchin cost?
The only question that, that I raised in a, I think a return email, was the increase in dollar value from twenty-two to twenty-four. And, you can go on whichever website you want to, and you can type in what was the dollar amount in this year versus the last year. And that's difficult when you project years that haven't occurred yet, because there are so many variables that go into what that dollar may result in. But from twenty-two to twenty-four, those are known, those, that year has occurred, and the current year has occurred, so in, in another email that I provided, difference in the dollar value from twenty-two to twenty-four was seven cents. Big seven cents, across that seventy million dollars, that's four point nine million dollars as opposed to the eleven million dollar increase, and I know these are estimates, I know that, I recognize that. But when you project eleven million dollars over eight years, that is, that is entirely an estimate, because twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty, those years haven't occurred yet, so it's, it's an unpredictable, it's basically a guess, because you have to put in the interest rates, you have to put in all that information. I just wanted to point that out, this project could, I'm not saying this project will not. If it's not completed, it will not cost more, I'm not saying that at all, it will. I just think that that, that initial response of eighty-eight million dollars could be a stretch based upon the variables that go into what a dollar value is today, and what it could be in eight years.
Comments or questions?
That's even more reason to lock in now, 'cause if a bid, you're locked in, if we keep waiting, as you know, things increase in time, we wait longer, building materials tend to increase, and building tends to increase.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, next.
Um, on this one, I, I need clarity on this question, what were you trying to ask? I wasn't sure.
Board has asked on different grants in the past, if there is any provision because of, this grant goes through Allegheny County. Have asked on other grants, since there... If I ask on other grants, since there is an additional cost involved in the processing, the whole administering of the grant, if there are funds available in that grant for such coverage, that's what I'm asking.
To cover what?
Administrative fees.
No, I, I think that's, and I don't mean to say this in an ugly way, but, I mean, I do jobs every day that is, is really just expecta- you know, it's an expectation. Um, we take care of park and recreation things, that's not really our duty, but we just do it because we have to. Um, it's just part of the job. So there is nothing really, there's no money set aside in that grant to pay for administrative duties, not unless you wanna add extra money.
I phrased that wrong, I'm not aware of any county employee that doesn't go above and beyond what their job description allows for. What I'm saying simply is, this board has asked if there is any projection or any thought that has been given to providing any type of structure or fee structure to the county for administering the grant.
No, sir.
Next, are there questions or comments?
I have a, I have a question from county manager. Uh, do you anticipate having to add one staff member to administer this?
Should it go to completion, I think that that is a possibility, yes, sir. But I phrase that with, I mean, keep in mind, the, the county has increased its overall budget over the last five years. Also increased your budget by fifteen million dollars for the town. You're getting ready to consider increasing it by another substantial amount. You, you're going to have, i- if both projects go through, you're going to have an additional eighty-five million dollars running through an organization that currently houses a thirty million dollar budget. That's, that's two and a half times what your current operating is. Does that require an extra staff member, it probably could. Because there are, eh, these things, and I'm not saying that to be negative, you asked me a question, I'm answering it. Only so much people can carry.
Uh, eh, and this is why I'm asking the question, because with the administration, the additional administration load, if we add a county employee, we're looking at, whenever we started looking at the benefits involved, we're looking at a minimum of forty thousand and, uh, Mr. Chair, I request order in the audience. If they can't, uh, maintain silence, I request that they leave the room. Do you guesstimate that, uh, what, fifty thousand dollars?
Including benefits.
Including benefits. So that would be an additional burden on the county.
Could be.
I, I don't believe it could be, I believe it will whenever we start administering eighty million dollars. That's a lot of bills that are gonna come through that have, and paperwork that we're gonna be involved with.
Reason I say could is you've only committed to the town project at this point, you have not committed to this project at this point.
I, well, I always plan in worst case, so. Very well, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
I got, I got a question here.
Go ahead.
Go back to the transfer facility, have we got enough help over there to take all this debris and run tire somebody?
No.
I have enough help.
No.
Yeah, is that the last question on this list? Because I, I had something I wanna ask Sid, I think we skipped over it, but, um, you know, we had that information last time about the subcontractors trimming three million dollars, and and it was a concern of like, is that three million dollars, is that something that's gonna come back? And I did have a conversation with, uh, uh, Jason about, you know, what he's seen in that, and from the professional point of him knowing a little bit about building, I just wanna ask you, of these things that you've seen cut are legitimate things that, of course, I know you're all reviewing that now, 'cause some things it may not.
I'll give you one example. It was spec'd for galvan- not galvanized, but, uh, well, standing seam roof versus, uh, TPO roof. We're not gonna do a TPO roof. That's, that's going backwards.
It doesn't, it doesn't last as long, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
So all those things that you, y'all went through, you're, you think are legit cuts?
Yeah.
Things that y'all can live with?
I think so, there's, there's some things that was a no-brainer, let's, let's do it, and there's other things, you know, we're gonna fight for that. Uh, I, I'll give you one more example, uh, cast iron was spec'd on a lot of the plumbing. Nobody plums with cast iron anymore. I can understand it when it gets to the ground level and goes underground, but everything above that needs to be Schedule forty PVC, that's a huge savings. So, uh, we're not willing, and that board's not willing, to cut the integrity of that building. Yes, there is some fat that can be cut from it, we're cutting it, but we, in this county, for so long, have underbuilt and underdone, especially when it comes to the school system. I don't know of one building that we've built that was built big enough. Uh, this one will be built big enough to grow.
So you're good, I, I guess my question is, and make sure that it's legitimate cuts, you're, everybody's good with it?
I am very confident in the trade part of it.
Right.
I understand that well, and, uh, I, I understand the talk and the cut, and I know where it'll affect us and where it won't affect us.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Sid.
Yep.
Any other follow-up questions or comments, Mr. Carter?
Uh, the, listing? Another thing I would mention, it, it, if you remember, the Board of Commissioners and the School Board met, jointly met on July the sixteenth. And mentioned, I provided the questions to the superintendent on the twenty-seventh. Look at the calendar, that's three business days that were included after you met, and that is three business days for the responses. It was identified early on the importance of getting this project looked at, reviewed, considered, and approved. We're in, we're in a window of time that keeps getting closer and closer each day. I, I don't apologize for the, I mean, of the, of the email. I am under that same window. It is my responsibility to provide you the information, you can only make a decision based upon the information you receive. And that's anyone's role that has to report to a board, that is that role. So we're in a hurry, and I understand we have an additional two weeks, that is very good, that is a very helpful tool for you as a board to use. I encourage you to do that. I just.
Go ahead.
I had another question, I know Missy had mentioned that this money does not have to be, um, it, it needs to be committed now. It not really need to be used until the third year, so my question to you is, is there something need to be put in contract creek from a county's point of view of loan, et cetera, to make that happen? Or is it a, I guess my question is, something has to be secured now before we make that commitment?
I would first ask Heather to mention to ability or the inability of a board to commit a future board, because what you were talking about is the possibility of a future board. So I would Heather first to address that, and then I will answer the remain.
I think we've addressed that before with different situations and discussed that, so you, you cannot make a decision right now that will affect a board in three years. If you agree that you're gonna make the commitment, I think you have to have that funding done now. Uh, and if that means that you say that you're borrowing the money, then you need to do that now. You may not have to give the money right away, but you need to make that, that loan happen. Um, the reason for that is you cannot commit money in future years, um, because you, you, what if the board changes? You can say, hey, I'm doing this, and this is what you voted on, but that is not something that a future board is bound by. So because of that, I think you, yes, if you say, yes, we're funding this program, then you need to have how you're gonna fund that set up. If that means now you're gonna do, um, an RFQ or an RFP, um, that you do that now. And then you determine how that funding is gonna work, uh, in the future, but you secure it now. Because if you sign for it now, that does secure that you have those funds for other boards in future years. Whether that's paid out now or later, you know, you, you've got that money, it's, it's been secured for the project because you sign loan documents saying you're borrowing the money. You can't renege on that once you agree that you're borrowing the money with a lender. Um, and then earmarking, you know, on an annual basis.
You would, you would basically set it up in a separate fund, and you would allow it to, to lay there until needed.
Heather, an interest, I hope.
Good, there, there are words that go along with what you're asking that, uh, act for now. So, any other clarification off that?
It's good.
Basically, if you, and I understand the comments about, we don't need it now, but you have to understand the commitment to another board, and in this case, you're gonna have another board this December. So although that's not important to some, it is important to you, because you will have a turn, a, a difference in your sitting board. So not to add any pressure to you, but if you're gonna make a decision on it, not only do you have to have the information to do that, but you have to have the financial resources in place prior to the changing of this board. And so Heather, just.
Yes.
Vince, John, Michelle, Greg, Tammy Moore? Next.
That's it for my portion, open to you guys for whatever questions or comments you may have.
Start with John.
Just general comments, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, as you can see, whenever the county starts looking into this area and a few other areas, it's not cut and dry, we've gotta take into account a lot of factors, a whole lot of factors. In the statement that we have underu- underbuilt, high school that, uh, Bobby and I were aware of was built in nineteen forty-nine. It replaced the high school that was built by the WPA in the thirties. That was around at least nineteen and thirty-five. Charlie Pugh told me that he was the class of thirty-six, and that was the first graduating class from that high school. With that was a gym that, uh, was also built with the WPA in Piney Creek. Piney Creek and Sparta were the only high schools in the state of North Carolina that you could have a basketball game rained out. And you didn't have any daggon room on the sides. Well, in forty-nine, the high school that was built in forty-nine, if my memory is correct, and I'm going on the basis of what my mother told me, and she was there, in forty-nine was the year I was born, it lasted until sixty-seven, that's pretty good outcome. Now we are in a facility that was built in nineteen sixty-seven, occupied in nineteen sixty-eight, and we've outlived it. Granted, we, we've expanded it. I do not object guaranteeing the money, but I got to make sure that it, that we are doing the proper investigation, looking at it, making sure that one, that the county can do it, because the biggest investment that this county can make is in its youth. The biggest export of this county is its youth. Nineteen sixty-seven, when I graduated, it was the largest and last class that graduated from Sparta High School, a hundred and four. They were, if memory serves me correct, about forty-eight males in that class. Ninety percent of us ended up in this military, either through draft or enlistment. About half of those ended up retiring from the military, because we realized that whenever you retired after twenty years, you came back to Allegheny County, you could have a pretty good life on your retirement. That school, uh, for those that don't know, my grandfather was on the county commissioners that approved the money, raised the money, because they didn't borrow a dime whenever they built that school in nineteen forty-nine. My mother taught in that school for forty-three years. I was around teachers, I, for that whole time. I know the importance of education, and I will support it. But I have got to make sure that, one, we are meeting the needs today and of the future, and that we are going to spend this money wisely if we have to spend it. I vacillated back and forth, I have told many that have called me, emailed me, asked me that I was looking for a reason not to support. I had to have these questions answered in my mind. And I have, frankly, I have not come to a conclusion. But I will mull it over, I will, I've taken, uh, copious notes, and look at it, and I anticipate that we are going to bring this up on August the fifth. Uh, time is of the essence, I realize that, we need to do it, I would love to put it to a vote of the, uh, on the general ballot, I don't think we're gonna have enough time for that. One of the things that I do realize, though, is you need a commitment only. That is an easy vote for us, there's two of us that won't be voting to raise the taxes to pay for it, or going out and, uh, looking to borrow the money, or really getting down to that tough question, but we're gonna obligate them. So I appreciate the work, the thoughts, that everyone has given to this, the information that you've provided. You may not have gotten the answers that you wanted, but I believe that you see where, how involved that it is whenever the county starts to take any things into consideration with this work session. Thank you for your time, your efforts, and, Mr. Chair, I will get off my soapbox.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle?
Well, I like to try to keep things as simple as possible, I mean, we can either, um, have a seven million dollar number that we spend now, and we get a, a brand-new shiny high school, or we can spend, uh, who knows how many millions repairing the old one that we're stuck with right, right now, so.
Can I interrupt you just?
Sure.
I got some information that's just hit all over what you just said. I put our schools on a five and ten-year plan. I try to plan that far ahead of what I think will come, and stuff that I know we'll have to tackle, roofs, building envelopes, stuff like that. So if we're talking about the high school, the old high school, years one through five would be a complete demo of all the water and sewer lines in the existing. Years one through five would be a complete demo of all the water and sewer lines in the existing building. You can't just stop at the kitchen. Those lines that goes upstairs into every one of those bathrooms, same age as ones in the kitchen. So it all has to be done. That's an estimated cost of five million dollars. Fix the separating structural wall on the top floor that runs the whole backside of the building. Estimated cost of four to five million. Years five through ten, complete re-roof the entire building with gutters, including the ag shot. Estimated cost, two million. Upgrade all wiring and electrical panels, which most are discontinued now you can't even buy parts for. Estimated cost, five million. Address the outside envelope of the building, the brick and the metal that, that's there now. That'll have to be dealt with in ten years. If you total that up, in ten years, we're gonna spend twenty-two million dollars.
Which for the brick and metal, please?
The what, sir?
Yeah, a dollar amount for the.
The estimated cost on the brick and metal would be five million.
Stuck on that five number, aren't we?
It's a good number. Everything costs five million nowadays, seems like. For in, so in ten years, you're totaling twenty-two million. We can spend seven now and get a brand new high school and save the county fifteen million in ten years. Just food for thought.
Thank you.
Michelle, go ahead. Good thought.
Yep. Thanks for sharing that. Um, so you know what? We just gonna have to let some water go under the bridge between this board and this. Cause there's some feelings that, you know, we haven't been included as much as we wanted to or whatever. We gotta get over all that. This is about the future of this county. And this is about a legacy that if we pass this up. We're gonna be the laughing stock of every board that's ever sat up here. It's gonna be worse than the Teapot Museum, the New River Dam. I seventy-seven not coming through here. We're gonna be the board that let fifty-nine million dollars go back. And our students sit up here in a high school that's falling down. I don't want. I don't wanna be a part of that. You know, there, i- it's about doing the right thing for the future of this county. And the kids are the future of this county. And if we don't do right by them, why are we even sitting in these chairs? We, we don't deserve to be here. And you know, I, you all are all in favor of it, but when we go outside these walls, we hear the naysayers. We hear the people, I don't want my taxes raised, blah, 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 blah. I can hear it right now. Well, just cut out the CTE part of it and you can afford it. That would be a grave mistake. I sit on the CTE board. And I'm gonna tell you, that is one of the greatest programs that we have going for these kids right now. Cause not everybody is gonna go to college. Not everybody can go to college, but you've got people who need to learn a trade. We gotta have people to fix our cars. We gotta have people to fix our plumbing and our electrical and we gotta have people that know how to weld. And a lot of those people are making a whole lot more money than college graduates right now. We have to set our kids up for success. And we cannot let this pass by us. That's all I.
Thank you, Michelle. Greg?
I don't think there's nobody on this board ain't for the school. Only thing concerned is these people that are on fixed income, I don't wanna see their taxes raised. We need to come up with a plan. We can. Maybe get this funded without raising taxes. That's my biggest concern on it.
Uh, yeah, I think, you know, the biggest thing is um. You, the first thing is, I don't, like Greg said, I don't think is anybody sitting here doesn't wanna do this. We just gotta figure out a way to do this. I don't think it's, and we need to do it in a responsible way. We don't need to be, you know, I think the last um, you know, within a week's time, I don't think we need to be. Of course, we don't have to write a seven million dollar check, but that's basically what was asked from us and we just need to talk through this. And figure out a way to do it to where it's, it's the least amount of pain, if there is any pain, that can be done. So I think, and yes, it's, it'll take a little time and, you know, we, we got a process we need to work through. We've, uh, there's a lot of questions answered today that I, that I've been wanting to know and I, this is the reason this meeting is good. But also on a personal note, I wanna say something. I, as, as being on this board, I've always tried, and it's just the way I grew up and I was raised to try to stay above the fray and. And, and try to be respectful to people and respectful people's thoughts and respectful people's differences and disagreements and. It's always, my golden rule is basically, it was taught to me as a young age, is treat people the way I wish to be treated. And I've always followed that rule and uh, this situation lately. Is sort of off tracks and I know, I, I appreciate people coming. I appreciate all you guys coming up and even care about this. And coming to this meeting and, and being a part of it and listen to the information and not just part of the information. And I do appreciate that and I appreciate all the good conversations I've had with people that may disagree with me. And, but very respectful conversation, but the ones that go about for its texts or emails or phone calls. That's condescending, derogatory or offensive. If you want to create a hardened resolve, that's a good way to do it. But I am completely open to somebody calling me and saying, hey, you know, this is my thoughts about this and. Um, you know, th- th- this is something that for whatever reason where it comes to the end and needs. I agree, needs to happen. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of things outside of this that we're not even thinking about and. Is, is economic stuff outside of like kids using a, you know, nice school. Is people coming in here to work, buying their gas, buying their, uh, uh, doing their hotels, so on, so on. So there is lots of positives about this. The point is, I, there is a way to get to that point uh, without all the other stuff. And you know, I ask that people like, you know, try to get all your information together, figure it out. And if you're not sure about something, ask questions and do it in a respectful way. I mean, I'm completely fine with people disagreeing with me. I know half the time people disagree with me and that's fine. And I just, I love the conversation. I actually love the debate. But to basically peg me as a hundred percent against this is, could not be further from truth. It just goes back to, I'm a business owner. I run budgets all the time. I, I've been blessed to be successful and I did not do that by, you know. And I don't mean this in a disrespectful way. I didn't do that by, you know, getting a plan drawn for a house. You know, it might be six hundred thousand dollars and I had four hundred thousand dollars spent on it. That's, that's just the way I think about trying to put things together. And that's the reason these meetings are important and all the questions are important. Um, to put that together and to come to some kind of workable way to make this happen. So I think, I think when we say that I think most, everybody in this room is trying to figure out a way to make this happen. Co- coo is, is uh, could, is, is a hundred percent true. So that's all I wanna say, but I do want again, I, I kinda thought the Board of Education was gonna be talking and I guess that was on my part. Um, but we didn't really need that. We just need information. We need from Missy, from Sid, from our head of departments. So I think it's good. I, I've got a lot more information than I had and I appreciate that and I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. I, I've talked to all these board members. I've talked to most of the school board members, a lot of people in the general public. It's my desire and I think it's obvious, it's this board's desire to make this project happen. And I think that we're very close to doing that. Uh, I think we had a lot of questions answered today and. To be a responsible commissioner, we can't make a decision in three or four weeks when you're talking about. Borrowing the most money this county's ever borrowed at one time. And at some point, that's gonna affect the taxpayers. But I think Mr. Carter has, he's been working on a way to make this happen. So I'm excited about uh, this project coming to, coming to realistic. Future in the very next few weeks. I think that Mr. Carter has a way to do it with a very minimal amount of a tax increase, if any at all. But it's getting together with the board, both boards and working out a way to make it happen. Where it has the least impact on the general public. I'm in no way in favor of losing a fifty-nine million dollar school. For a seven million dollar investment. It does, that doesn't make sense. So I'm, I'm challenging our board and your board, let's get together and make it happen. I'd like to see in the next, I don't know if we can do it by August. There's uh, that's pretty quick, but I think it'll be done before the school starts maybe. And that's my, that's my approach to get this project. I'd like to see you up there digging tomorrow and uh, I've always been in support of the school system. That, that's been in my blood, that's been in my family's blood. I spent twelve years on the Board of Education. So there's no way that I'm not gonna do everything possible to go ahead and make this program become reality. I'll look forward to working with both boards and uh. I'd just like to see this thing, I'd like to see the paper signed very quickly, but we have to do it in a responsible way. I think that's what, I didn't realize that it would take that long to borrow the money. Uh, that's, that was news to me, but I think once this board makes that commitment. With our credit as a county, I don't think anybody would turn us down. We're just, uh, we just need to get going and, and work together. I appreciate the Board of Education. I, I appreciate everybody coming today. Uh, Sid, Missy, thank you for the tours. It, it clears up a lot and I'm sort of a simple person. I, I like to see the problem. I just don't like to talk about it. I wanna see some of these comments that have been made. Uh, when people call me or send me a message, I answer that and that was what I was doing today. And uh, some of their, their concerns were legitimate and some of them, they just misunderstood what they were talking about. So I just look forward, uh, I don't wanna put too much pressure on Mr. Carter, but. Do you have any type of timeframe in mind? When we could try to put a program, financial program together, how to make this happen? Not to put you on the spot, but.
Choked up, not because of what you just asked, but um. Public procurement is different than private. Private, you can turn around dollars a lot quicker than you can in a public's. That is why April identified that plenty day. You're gonna have, as I understand it, you're gonna have to make a commitment. Probably at your next board meeting to be able to fit within the timeframe identified uh, for the holding of the bids. Will not have a financial package complete by the time you make or consider making that commitment. Mentioned by the time they go back to school. I don't wanna bust your bubble, but it probably is not gonna happen by the time they go back to school. You're probably looking at best, you're probably looking into September sometime into October. Because you're thirty days out on an RFP. So basically kill most of the month of August just in solicitation. Then review of such, then interviews of such, and you go through all that and recommendations and approvals and moving forward. So you're, you're sometime September, October before you actually have what you need, what you're setting out to get. It's my time for. I would say within the next quarter. It'd be a responsible answer. I think. I've said at least three times already, your biggest task is the consideration of this at your next meeting. Because that's when you commit that fund.
Our next meeting is August the first. No, what, I mean, uh, no, that was August the fifth. And we would have, the agenda will be put out on July the thirty-first.
Hey, whatever that is.
We've got time to get some of the facts together to have it on the agenda for August the fifth. That's what you're saying?
That is partially what I'm saying. If, if there are any remaining facts to be compiled. Send them what they are because I.
And that would be for all the, us board members. John, you have a question?
Just to clarify, uh, you, now, it's my understanding. The only thing that the school board needs is a commitment from us for the seven million dollars. This will allow them.
Part one.
Part one, but what, what needs to take place as quickly as possible because time is of the essence. Is a commitment from this board that we will come up with seven million dollars if needed. Now how we do that, we can discuss and discuss in the future, but the board has got to have a commitment from us.
That, that is correct, but do not forget. You're going to consider this at your August fifth or whatever date meeting that is. Okay, September, October, November, and guess what? December, you've got a change in your board. Goes back to what Heather just talked about. So you basically got, you know, those few months to get everything in order before this new board takes their seat.
There's no need for us to start the loan process until we've made that commitment.
Make a decision on the fifth of August. You know, you're sitting there. Once you make that commitment, the wheels begin to turn.
Any other comments? Greg, Timmy, go ahead.
One question. So in that, by our next meeting, in a broad commitment. I feel like we need some kind of, I mean, you're just like, well, we're committing seven million dollars. So is it possible to have um, options, the plans even al- also in that meeting? Is that? Cause I'm not really crazy about just committing like, well, we'll do it some way or another. I'd like to know what our options are.
There, there are possibilities. I, I don't think it begins and ends with just a loan. Feel like that, that there are going to be some options that will hit you as a Board of Commissioners. And I feel like there are some options that will likewise hit the Board of Education. So likely there may be casualties on both sides to make this work. But irregardless, to answer your question, yes, I think there can be some options that are thrown out.
Greg, anything? Thing in, but go ahead, Michelle.
So to clarify.
So, to clarify, on August fifth, we will be taking action of either committing or not committing to this project so they can meet their deadline. Thank you.
Any, anything, Heather, anything to add? Mr. Carter? Like to thank everybody for showing up. Sid and Missy, thank you all for the information. It was helpful. I, I think that, that you've, you understand that, I think, I personally think the project's on the go. And at the, uh, the fifth of August, I guess we'll make it official.
My grandchildren will thank you.
If there's nothing else to say, I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bathroom break, boss.